Good evening. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10-4-6 PL 1975, C. 231 S. 1 amended in 2006, C. 70 S. 2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the new poster on January 8th, 2021 via email copies of this notice have also been placed at the administration's building bulletin board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January 8th, 2021. The Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skill and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving, global society. Roll call please, Mr. Hastings.
Sabre Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Breach.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Griller.
Here.
Mr. LaRocca.
Here.
Mr. Remy.
Mr. Saunders.
Ms. Zelinski.
Here.
Cynthia.
Here.
Please stand for the class.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. LaRocca, would you like to start with your committee report?
I apologize, I missed the finance committee, so I thank Ms. Zelinski, Robert Jo, thank you.
Thank you.
My apologies.
At our finance committee, we discussed the porting appointment of the new energy service company. The 2022 budget, we went over just briefly about how much money that we will not be getting this year that's being reduced. It's in the realm of about, what, six? What is it, Mr. Hastings, six?
The estimate is, without any enrollment adjustments, about $5.5 million.
$5.5 million. We also discussed Kelly Services and substitution rates, the central office lease, RFP for architectural services because of the federal regulations with the ESER funds being utilized. We also did discuss ESER funds with the building improvements, HAVAC, all the four district schools need new boilers, air handlers with rooftop sub systems, air conditioning, and we also discussed the media and science room modernizations. Any questions? Mr. Hastings, did I miss something?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Zelinski. Would you like, Ms. Cook, would you like to report on the...
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So, recommendable board group looks for the early childhood development department in collaboration with the Central Jersey Urgent Care to provide 100 vouchers for the flu vaccine at the Office of Central Jersey, Central Jersey Urgent Care to assess preschool families in meeting the state influenza vaccine mandate for preschools children. Caution not exceed over $2,000. The recommended board group will obtain a licensing of social and emotional literacy curriculum titled "Dangers of Our Mind" toward the Dr. Martin Luther King at, in Asbury High, sorry, Asbury Park High School. This curriculum will provide a unique perspective on issues that affect students due to their personal cerebral impairment. "Dangers of the Mind," LLC identifies mental breakdowns that, one, may face in order to overcome their negative thoughts and part fundamentally create a substantial, sometimes sustainable, progressive outcome for their future. Over the course of 36 weeks, students will be able to identify and engage in lessons that are designed to reach, teach, and build a strong system for, I'm sorry, future pioneers that will be able to harness their internal power and ultimately catapult into their rightful no, rightful purpose, I'm sorry, and the caution not exceed over 6,000. Lastly, I'm sorry, that was my last one. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Cook. Mr. Remy, buildings and rooms. Mr. Hastings?
Sure. There were no facility use requests for the committee to consider. We talked about the solar project going on at the four schools and updated the committee. Panel placements are complete, we're awaiting a JCPN L hook update here at Bradley, Thurgood and the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Upper Elementary. We both, expected both schools, the panels to be in place by the end of next week, and they were working on the anchoring system at the high school at this time, so that should begin next week with the start of the panel placements. Again, we did talk about the RFP for architectural services so that we're complying with federal procurement rates in terms of spending ESER money, and we talked about moving forward with the competitive contract for a energy savings company for our ESET.
Are there any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Mr. Griller.
Sure, thank you. So, at the policy committee meeting, there are a couple of new mandated policies. One was the school employee vaccination requirements that are new. On August 23rd, Governor Murphy signed Executive Order 253 that requires all public school districts, charter schools, parochial schools, and employees to be fully vaccinated or submit to COVID testing at a minimum of one or two times per week, and the executive board was effective October 18th. And Strauss Estme developed a policy guide to address the vaccination and testing requirements. And so that was one policy that is new. There was also one that was a safety plan for healthcare settings in school buildings. Also, a new policy that was mandated was a revised statute that permits a school district to implement a commissioner-approved program for virtual or remote instruction in the event that a school district is required to close for more than three consecutive school days due to public health emergency or any declared state of emergency. And then finally, there was a revised mandate on sexual harassment of students, and the final rule defined sexual harassment requires the school district to designate a Title IX coordinator, outlines notice requirements, and establishes a reporting, investigation, hearing, and appeal process requirements. And I think that's it. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Ms. Breach?
We actually had two brief meetings since our last full board meeting. One was dealing with the homecoming situation, which unfortunately, we weren't able to have a parade, but we were still able to have a game, which we won, so we're looking at maybe, you know, doing something down the road if we have another playoff game as far as, you know, the floats and things like that, that's going to be discussed. The other meeting was dealing with the appointment of our high school head boys' basketball coach and assistant coach, which is still in the process. No decision, no recommendations haven't made at that time, at this time. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? I think that will conclude our committee meeting, our committee reports. At this time, we're going to be opening the floor up for public participation. Please come up to the mic, state your name and your address. Thank you. You have three minutes.
Hello, Felicia Simmons, 1034 Soul Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I'm here for a couple reasons, but most of the reason is the objective. First, I commend a lot of these school boards for pushing past your personal and physical shortcomings and things that you have to do, to come and do your job for the community which you serve, and I commend, I commend you and love you for it because it's important. And also, on that note, we have to say that this is not a seat for people to continuously pass out their personal vendettas. I'm here for a case particularly from 2014 that's cost the school district well over $100,000 in litigation, which, right, I won. I won with a judgment. They're appealing it, so it's going to cost the school district even more money, but it's foolishness because in the end, it was just someone carrying out their personal vendetta, which I hear through the community that that is continuing. When you take every dollar that you spend on something that is foolish and reckless, you take it away directly out the mouths and the hands of our children, which they need, right? We talk about these cuts, so what can we spend $100,000 or well over $100,000 on something that's been, is just ridiculous, right? Well, it's called the judge, foolishness and unnecessary, right? What could we have spent it on? Education, science programs, different things. The science labs look the same as I did when I left here 20 years, just about. We take it out, all the people who spend your time here, you're away from your family, away from other things, you have, it is more important for you to use that time to spend on our children, not to carry out people's personal agendas, which harms the school district, and that's exactly, directly against the vow and oath that you took to say, to protect the school district in the interest of the school. Your job is specific, the most important job you have to as a school board member, to hire a superintendent and to permit policy and produce policy, right? Real policy, policy that benefits the districts for the future, and that is your job, not to carry out personal agendas, not to get friends' jobs, not to get deals, not to sustain your foundations, but is to put to, to do a job for the children in the benefit of this community. We're looking here to make sure that it's carried out. There's objectives that our children need, we're in dire need. The world has changed and cobbled around us, so we don't have time for foolishness and vindictiveness, and I just want to again, thank all you who spend your time. God bless you and have a wonderful night and continue to do your job.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Mrs. Bray, resident of Asbury Park. I was reading your mission statement, it says, "Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving, global society." Well, once again, I'm coming out tonight because my daughter is on home instruction. I have reached out, this is my only child that has been in this Asbury Park system. The integrity lacks, communication lacks, I feel like I'm chasing you all for things for my daughter that she is supposed to have. When I say something to everybody, they're like, "Oh, I don't get the money, oh, such and such gets the money." It doesn't matter who gets the money for my child. She is still getting a grant for to go to public school, and just because she's on home instruction does not mean that she's thrown to the wayside and you get to her whenever you feel like it, because I'm just not that parent. I'm big on education, and if she needs this to succeed, and you all are the ones with the key focus to help her succeed, I need more communication, and I need y'all to better up y'all integrity, because everybody as a whole is not great. This education system is failing, there's too many secrets going on, it's just too much, and if you're too busy and you're too tired at the end of the day, think, you picked this profession, you said you're going to help better our children, so if the job is too much for you, you need to pass the baton to somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Rogers, Soul Avenue. I seem to be repeating myself on questions I'm asking and a couple of things on the First of all, I don't know everything, and if they can explain the Kelly Services situation, we're reading that principals, because we don't have substitutes, are happy to run classes. I know we got rid of vice principals, I know we don't have a situation that we understand. Is there a process to make sure that we're getting enough staff in these buildings to get what needs to be done? And I did speak to a former person that does substitute, and they told me that the rate was low versus other districts, and they went to other districts. So, we have a service that we're paying for, what are we doing? And like I said, maybe it's a cost savings using Kelly Services, I don't know. My other issue goes to, and I hope these things are explained to me, this building situation, and I've spoke to many people in this building, on this, on this Fourth Avenue building, if you need on a Saturday, we go in and we tag what people are in what rooms, I can move most of your staff out of that building into these other auxiliary buildings where we're paying almost half a million dollars for stuff that should be going to our kids. We have to realize that we're reducing these fees, taxpayers are going to have to increase their taxes, and we're going to have to realize how to maintain and satisfy the needs of our kids and get things done, and I have everybody be laxed and be comfortable. It's not about being comfortable, these kids are deserving. And I get to, when you get a person that's coming up and talking about her child over and over again, it's ridiculous. How many times have we got to have a person come up and talk about their child? And I know many people that haven't come, and they call me asking what they should do. This is ridiculous, and somebody's got to say something. She is right, if you don't want to do this, this is, this is, this is not something that people who are getting paid great salaries are benefiting from. We need to make sure these kids are satisfied and getting stuff, and we need to stop the underhand in this and everything else that's going on. Like, people don't know what's going on in this district, it's ridiculous. We have to start rebuilding this community, and until we start doing it, no one else is going to do it, and you think that I go away, ask the city? Because I went after the city manager because they weren't thinking about what is best for this community? I will go after every person that does not want to benefit this community and these kids.
Good evening, my name is Ramon Palmer. Before I get started, Mr. Hastings, I have something that I would like to give you so you can give out to the board members, please. Good evening, once again, can everyone hear me? Okay. And I will ask that when board members speak, can you guys remove your masks, because I'm in the back row and I really could not hear much of anything. I think I heard Ms. Zelinski say that you guys had interviewed for basketball, and you guys had not made a determination, so I'm here to speak about that this evening. I wrote an email to the athletic director yesterday, and I'd like to read it to you. So, "Mr. Mark Jubino, I am writing to you about the position that I applied for in September of this year for the head coach, head coaching position of the high school boys' basketball program. In my interview, I was asked about my qualification for said position. I shared with you then, and I will reiterate my experience to you again in this email. Before I list the vast amount of experience with coaching and training I have with both male and female athletes, I would like to say to you that it would be my honor and the dream come true to be in position to lead young men and not only teach them about basketball, but the commitment it takes as an individual to be successful. Also, how working synergistically with others in the team concept can be both rewarding and memorable. I played basketball for the Blue Bishops and graduated from high school in 1985. I left Asbury Park holding several records that are still in place today. I hold the record for the most steals, the most assists, and ultimately, I am Asbury Park's all-time leader in points. I am proud of those accomplishments, but I believe I have held on them far too long. Records are made to be broken, there should be a desire to set a new standard, a new mark of achievement. Our students are missing out on so much history. This is why I believe that I would be an asset to the program. There were many accolades that I received coming out of high school, the most gratifying was accepting a full four-year scholarship to the Monmouth University Men's Program. I have been coaching and training individuals in basketball since I returned home from college in 1990. I worked as a training coach at local facility in Neptune called Hoop Group. I spent one season coaching young men for a prep school team out of Ocean Township. I've also started my own AAU program called Universal Laws of Basketball, which ran for seven years, several years here in district. The ULOB program is recognized in Asbury Park school system like similar youth programs, Pop Warner, and the Little League Baseball. I also work as a high school referee, which allowed me the opportunity to see athletes across the state mature and receive scholarship opportunities to further their education as well as their lives. With the proper training, coaching, and life skills instruction, I believe this would make a big difference in creating opportunities that our children in the city need and deserve to be exposed to. I have recently found out that the interview that I had with you, there was no head coach chosen. It was also brought to my attention that the job was reposted and closed without anyone from the district notifying me of the reason a coach was not hired and the opportunity to reapply. At this point, I believe that there may have been some bias as to why I was not given the position or the opportunity to reapply. I am seeking an internal investigation on the hiring practice that ostensibly have rendered my application, resume, and experience void in this situation. I would like to be honestly considered for this position. I am looking for a response from you, sir, sooner than later, or I'll be forced to seek help from the state attorney general on your hiring practices. I would love to be chosen to serve the children of Asbury. I am someone who takes basketball and education seriously and will commit to the teaching and proper training of our children in Asbury Park." So, I wrote that email because, as I said, I interviewed for this job on September 16th, and I never heard anything about someone being chosen. The job was reopened and closed, and I was never notified about it. It's also been brought to my attention that you've had some board, so I'm talking directly to you right now at this point, Mr. Adams, right? So, you're the superintendent, you handle the day-to-day operations. I've been, it's been brought to my attention that you've had board members.
Madam President, point of order.
Excuse me?
Point of order. Mr. Palmer, you should be directing your comments to the board president, you were at one point.
Madam President, I'm speaking with you, okay? I was told that you have board members who overstepped, excuse me, their ethics, right? Their sworn ethics to handling day-to-day operations, right? They're telling people stories about me that is not accurate, that I was told that prevented me from being chosen for this opportunity. I'm from Asbury Park, like I said in my email, I played here in the city, I received a Division I scholarship, I hold records in this school, I'm a retired fireman from the city. As you know, I've sat in that position that you currently sit in twice. I've committed myself to the city of Asbury Park, I've committed myself to helping young people in this community. For board members, for board members, who job, like Ms. Felicia Smith Simmons said earlier, your job is to set policy. It's not to handle day-to-day operations, there's other people that you pay in this district to do that. So, like I said, when I wrote this email to the athletic director, I would like to hear something sooner than later about why I was not given the opportunity to reapply for a position that I believe that I am most qualified for, most deserving.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
Do we have any emails or phone calls? Hastings?
A question. To Mr. Adams and Madam President, do you think we should discuss this matter in closed session, or can we not, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, it's my understanding that the interview process is ongoing, and as a result of that, and in view of the fact that no one has been selected for the position or no names have been put forward, it really is premature for the board to even consider this at this point. Additionally, as everyone knows, no names come forward without the superintendent putting them forward. So, as far as I'm aware, the interview process is ongoing, no selection has been made, and therefore, there really is nothing for the board to do right now unless and until the superintendent makes a recommendation with regard to a name.
Seagull Brazil, 100 Jefferson Street, Asbury Park. I'm going to go back way back to younger years, when my son was like in elementary, middle school, high school. We had a thing called SMT, School Management Team, we also had a thing called School Leadership Committee, so it was for the interview process for these positions, you had community people, you had parents, you had administrators, you had teachers, and you had parent professionals. So, I think that need to come back so everything can be transparent, and so we wouldn't be having these problems today. Thank you, and y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Acevedo, I'm an alum of Asbury Park High School and a basketball player, also a retired referee. I'm here in behalf of my friend and brother, Ramon Palmer. I'm going to make this as quick as I can. There is no better individual qualified to lead the children of Asbury Park in sports and basketball and towards education than that individual. That man, I've known him 40 years, has given his life, his money, his time to the children of Asbury Park. Not to go into his personal business, that man has lost a lot of financing trying to uplift the young people and athletics of Asbury Park, and I think, and know in my heart, that it would be a disservice to this community, to these young people, that we allow this individual to go somewhere else and teach other people's kids about basketball, about refereeing, and about life. This is an individual, this, none of us are perfect, despite his character flaws, this is a high-character human being that I think should be not only considered, but chosen for the opportunity, and I guarantee you, you guys will never, ever regret it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
There are no emails to our public comment box.
Okay, so we'll be closing the public participation portion.
Hi, my name is Pamela Ferguson. I'm here in behalf of my granddaughter, Kaziah Franks. My granddaughter attends this school, Bradley School, she was attending Obama School until they closed the school up. My problem is, I have a granddaughter and I have no way to get her to school. She was receiving transportation by the bus, they stopped the bus. I have I have no way to get her to school. She loves school. She wants to come every day. And I want to know what is being offered for parents that they closed Obama School. I'm, as you can see, I'm disabled. I cannot walk her to school. I have an older grandson. He goes to the high school. He has to be in school before she does. So I'm at a dilemma, and I need some help. And that's why I'm here. So I wanted to know if there's any way that I can receive any help to get her transportation. When school started, the bus came and got her. They stopped the bus, and they just left me in a pit hole. I've been using money every day for cat fear to get her to school. I don't run out of money for the month. I just get disability. So I need, I need help.
Can you repeat your name for me, please?
Pamela Ferguson. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to be closing the public participation portion.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Hamilton. I live at eighty-four Creek Road in Kingsburg, New Jersey. I'm a twenty-two-year-in-the-classroom teacher. I originally came up here to find out if I got an answer to my question last month about the racial statements that were made on the public website. I was met with silence. Not an agreement, not a disagreement, no questions, nothing. I also hope to come back tonight to talk about that, but the last-minute addendum infuriated me. After a nationwide search, this board has decided to let Dr. Repellet's political fingers stay in the system. We saw that little smoke and mirrors show with Dr. Repellet. We saw the nepotism. We saw the positions that were created for people that were not qualified for it. And still, we was met with silence. If we want to move this district forward, you need to listen to the people that actually work in the trenches. I'm not here as a disgruntled employee. This is my first, last, and only stop in my educational journey. I didn't hitch my wagon, stop here, milk the system, and move on to a new position. I'm not going off to Brookdale. I'm not going off to Kane University. And to find that that was met with silence, it just disappoints me as an educator. At least I would hope that someone would stand up and disagree with me. The nonsense about the blogger, nobody, nobody, not Central Office, not the board, no one disagreed that those statements were false or true. The survey we gave you from the staff, which more than two hundred staff responded to, eighty percent felt that the Cat Present, Cat Present Acting Superintendent was not our choice. This was not a personal attack. This was looking to put our school district on a good foot towards the future. This is like watching the play Cats with the next round of characters playing the lead roles. We have never decided to change our course. And I, I, I came in here, I didn't even want to come tonight. I was so upset that this last-minute addendum was slipped in. It was not public this afternoon. And then it's going to be pushed through tonight. I urgently ask the board to reconsider and to listen a little more to the people that actually do the work every single day, educating and keep in love with these children of Asbury Park. Our COVID protocols are not followed. Everything that's tweeted out makes it look like everything is just great in the district. Talk to any local police officer, as I did last month after the meeting, and they have a very different story about what's going on in the district. Talk to any teacher and find out if you do have the supplies, if you do have the support that you need, and you'll find a very different story. Talk about the walkthroughs where eight to ten people walk into a classroom. They spend two hours every day in a school. And then all we get is negative feedback. My last feedback, I heard from a supervisor, that my last feedback was that I sat on a desk, an empty desk, while I was giving instructions to my students in class. This is my style. Anybody who wants to walk into my classroom, feel free. Every day you will see a classroom that is loaded with love and support, not politics. This whole fact that it's being pushed through tonight is absolutely disgraceful and disgusting. I appreciate you letting me vent my anger and vent my frustration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, the public participation portion of our meeting is closed. Do you have a little more?
My name is Danielle Petrucci. I'm a resident of Middletown and an Asbury Park School District staff. Good evening. Nineteen months into this global pandemic, I am here to share my concerns about the management, or rather mismanagement, of the safety in our schools. I have previously addressed these concerns with human resources, school nurses, administrators, and union representatives. However, district policy and the lack of enforcement is a matter that should be brought to your attention. On October twenty-second, the end of the seventh week of school, day thirty-three, a document titled "The Road Forward" twenty-one, twenty-two was posted on the district website. This information was never sent to staff or parents. It is available only in English. It lacks details and accountability, and honestly, it is very hard to locate on the website. Our school nurses were not even included in the development of this plan, nor were they made aware of its posting on our district website. Even with this plan, many questions still remain. Parental screening is included in the plan. However, we currently don't have any screening in place for students. All staff signed a form agreeing to stay home if we were sick, but there is nothing for parents and students and never was. Even at the height of the pandemic last year, there was no screening at all. In other towns, including where I live, children were not even allowed to enter the school building without a form or screening. Most parents are not aware of how long they have to keep their child at home or where to get tested, but we can't blame this when this information was never provided to them. By the time they are notified, it is too late, and the student has been in school or been exposed to others. Contact tracing and testing is also mentioned in the Road Forward Plan. As staff, we don't know who is considered a close contact because the criteria seems to vary. There is no consistent criteria for the timeline of exposure. Students, staff, and families are all put at risk. Many staff members, including myself, were never notified of direct exposure to COVID-nineteen. Some parents have delayed testing due to access to transportation or insurance, putting everyone at risk since contact tracing doesn't technically begin until the test result is available. Staff have recently reported to all of us that it has taken up to fifteen days for them to be notified of their direct exposure. All of these responsibilities will be placed on the school nurses, who are either being pulled to cover another school or managing other daily medical emergencies. One nurse in particular is working with over six hundred and forty students on her own. The school day doesn't even allow time to address these COVID-related processes. Will there be testing available for the vaccinated staff in addition to the unvaccinated staff and students, as mentioned in the new plan? If and when the testing takes place, will the nurse be expected to manage testing of staff and students with one sink in the isolation room? How can we expect our nurses to take all of this on when they were never involved or made aware of this? Why don't our dedicated, educated staff get the same communication and transparency as the dedicated educators do in other districts? And why aren't our parents and children given the same respect as others in those districts? We all, can I finish? We all want our students in school, learning, but this lack of policy and procedure enforcement and lack of accountability scares me. I know that we are all here because we are in support and have concern for the education and well-being of the students at Asbury Park. All of you serve this district in an extraordinary way in dedicating your time and expertise as board members. I am confident that you two believe that our children, parents, teachers, nurses, and staff deserve much better than what is taking place in our schools regarding this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now the public participation portion of our meeting is closed. Distances. At this point in term, we're going to be going into exec. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act allows for the exclusion from discussion at the public portion of a meeting of certain matters as outlined below. And whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education wishes to discuss such matters and make and will make such matters public when the proper conclusion has been reached. Now therefore be resolved that on, at October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purpose as outlined and described below, upon return, action may be taken. We'll be going into exec for the following reasons.
Going into executive session to discuss matters related to personnel, contracting, matters related to attorney-client privilege, matters related to litigation. And it's anticipated that we will be in executive session for approximately thirty minutes. We will be returning to this room after executive session.
I'll move it. Good evening again. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA ten, four-six, PL nineteen seventy-five, C two thirty-one, S one amended two thousand and six, C seventy, S two, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on January eighth, two thousand and twenty-one via email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. The Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving, global society. Roll call, please, Mr. Hastings.
Ms. Alba Zanderson. Ms. Breach. Ms. Cook. Mr. Grillo. Mr. Lotaraca. Mr. Remy. Mr. Saunders. Ms. Lozenzki. Is that him?
Here. May we please stand in suit, flag. Here we have a presentation by Dr. Hallid.
Good evening. Good evening. What I'm passing out is the SSDS report for period two of the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year, which is the period from January to June of two thousand and twenty, school year. So that's the second half of the school year, January to June. Which everyone gets one. Okay, so if you take a look at the first page, we have the columns with the schools, column with the incidents, column with other, and column with HIV. So incident refers to anything that falls category of violence, vandalism, substance offenses, or weapons offenses. Other incident, other are incidents that would lead to the removal of a student from the school. So whether that be a suspension, an expulsion, and things like that. So those are the two categories. And of course, the HIV is a harassment, intimidation, and bullying category. So if you take a look from period two, at the Asbury Park High School, we had three incidents, one other, and zero HIBs. At MLK, we had one incident, two others, and zero HIBs. At Bradley, excuse me, we had, I'm sorry, this is Barack Obama, but that was again January until June. We had zero incidents, zero other, and zero HIBs. And then at Bradley Elementary, we had zero incidents, zero others, and zero HIBs. And Thurgood Marshall, we had zero in all categories. For the period one of the school two thousand and twenty-one, so there's a comparison. We had, again, we weren't in school for the most part in the period one, which was from September until June, I'm sorry, to December of two thousand and twenty. So of course, we had zero in all categories in all schools. So again, that was from September of two thousand and twenty to December of two thousand and twenty. So if you turn the page. So here's the comparison from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty. As you can see, from period two, we had seven incidents at the high school, six others, and zero HIBs. At MLK, we had ten incidents. We had ten other categories, and we had zero HIBs. At Barack Obama, we had zero incidents, one other, and zero HIBs. At Bradley, we had zero incidents, one other, and zero HIBs. At Thurgood Marshall, there was one incident, two others, and zero HIBs. So I did a comparison with all the schools. So if you take a look at Asbury Park High School, I'm just comparing period two, which again was from January to June. And the Asbury Park High School, and we had seven incidents. And then the following year, we had three incidents. So we went down by four. In the other category, we had six incidents. We had one other. Sorry, we have zero, excuse me, in the other category, we had six. And the first year, and then this year, two thousand and twenty-one, we had one. And so again, that was a reduction by five. And then our HIV category at the high school, we had zero incidents period two from last year, and then we had zero this year. So it was the same. At the MLK building, we had ten incidents last year in period two, and this year we had one. So that was a reduction by nine. And the other category, we had ten. And then again, this year we had two, which was a reduction by eight. And the HIV category, we had zero in both last year and this year. If you turn the page. Take a look at Bradley Elementary. Last year, we had zero incidents, and this year we had zero. In the other category, last year we had one, and this year we had zero. We had zero HIBs last year and zero this year. Thurgood Marshall, last year we had one incident. This year we had zero, which was a reduction of one. And we had two other incidents at last year. We had zero this year, which was a reduction by two. Last year, we had zero HIBs, and this year we had zero as well. So on the bottom, I did a three-year comparison. So twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, and twenty to twenty-one. The first year, we had twenty-four incidents. Twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, we had thirty-six incidents. And twenty twenty to twenty-one, we had four incidents. And the other category in twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, we had fifty-seven incidents. I'm sorry, other. And then last year, we had thirty-two, and this year we had three. And twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we had six HIBs. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we had three HIBs, and this year we had zero. The last page. Take a look at suspensions from January to June. Bradley and Thurgood had zero suspensions. And then the Asbury Park High School, from January to June, we had, I think, two. And Bradley Elementary, we had one. And Thurgood Marshall, like I said, we had zero. Anyone have any questions? Yes.
I realize the format of this particular report, I think, is state-required, and that's how we do it. Can you subsequently provide the board with any other assessment data about our social-emotional learning in light of the fact that we're looking at these years now, and COVID has, may have played some significant, major part in what we're seeing? It's difficult to say, but we'd like, we'd like to know that all the things put in place, COVID or not, are they working with regard to, you know, HIVs? Thank you.
Sure. Any more questions, comments? Thank you.
Now we have a report from our acting superintendent.
That concludes my report.
Okay. No presentation either? No presentation in the report? Okay. We're going to be opening up the floor for public participation. Please come to the mic, state your name, your current address, and then your issue.
Tracy Rogers, Soul Avenue. I got a little emotional before, but I still want to follow up on that question with the Kelly Services. Is there any reason, or how are we looking at making sure that we get an efficient, sufficient amount of staff in the buildings to make sure that situation is taken care of? Are we looking at raising the cost? Are we looking at evaluating? Can someone explain that to me? And what's the criteria of who we're picking to get these substitutes? My other question, but it's not even a question, and this is to the, to the president, I would like her to ask her attorney, because as I listened to the gentleman come up about the basketball position, if he's out of the first election, and they closed it and reposted, even though results haven't come out, he hasn't been contacted, so why are they saying there's nothing to discuss when there's something about his issues that may be incorrect? So why aren't we looking at that again? And if this person is out of the running, why aren't we discussing that? Was there some information that was put out wrong by members of the administration or the board? I mean, is there information that we need to look at? So, you know, these two questions need to be answered. I think, you know, just, these are very open questions.
I know in terms of Kelly Services, and before that, we had Source for Teachers, there has been a challenge in getting substitute teachers, and that's across the country, not just unique to this situation. I know that HR has been working diligently on fixing some of those issues, and we're looking, in terms of raising the pay and everything, we're looking at every possible avenue to attract more substitute teachers here.
Okay, is Kelly that option? And also about the gentleman, you know, if his name is out of the running, then what do you mean it's discussed? Why doesn't, need to be discussed if there's an instant, issue of his record?
As I said before, it's an ongoing interview process, and I'm not going to comment on that, nor should the board comment on that, especially given a threat of litigation that we heard earlier from the podium. And so we're just not going to comment on anything with regard to the interview process other than to say it's ongoing.
That's the lack of transparency.
Good evening once again, Ramon Palmer. You said the interviews are still going on. The question is-
No, I said the interview process is still, or the hiring process, if you will, is still ongoing.
Right, so the question is, when would you think it would end and you would hire a coach? Because the season is about a month away. So the fact that we don't even have a coaching place now, our kids are at a disadvantage because there are other facilities that hold fall leagues, where teams are playing, getting to know one another, develop relationships and rapport with one another, our team is not getting that opportunity. So they're not weight training, they're not running, they're not doing anything that's going to be necessary to allow them to hit the ground running once training starts or the season begins. We're at a disadvantage, again, this year because we have not hired someone for the position. And then when you have, like I said, board members that, you know, broke their code of ethics, prevents us from doing things that's necessary for our children. It's really not about me, it's always about the young people in my mind, and the question is why are we always pulling our children at a disadvantage? That's your turn, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, all I can say, again, I think you've raised valid questions, valid points, but I can't comment any further with regard to the interview process, the hiring process. I know that it is top of mind for the district in that they want to be able to field the team adequately prior to the beginning of the basketball season, which gets underway after Thanksgiving, but of course, you want to train and strength train and all that kind of stuff beforehand. So, Mr. Palmer, I think that you raised some very, very, very valid concerns, and the only thing I can say is that it's an ongoing process. I really honestly don't have any more information other than that at this point. I would imagine, though, that as the process moves forward and moves to conclude, we should have some more information to share with the public and the community within the next couple of weeks, if not sooner.
So you had to have a special board meeting? Or do you wait for the-
I don't know. The board's not going to take any action unless and until the superintendent makes a recommendation, and the superintendent's not prepared to do that right now because the interview process is ongoing.
Thank you very much for your-
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is David Morton, Fifth Avenue, Asbury Park. So it has been some time since I've been at a school board meeting. And actually, today, I'm here really in support of Dr. Adams in the hopes that the members of the board will support his efforts to become the new superintendent. In addition, I guess I, just given my background, which is a manufacturing background, dealing with aircraft at Boeing, there's things that when I look at you conducting meetings seem to slip, for lack of a better word, given the presentations that we have to make at a major manufacturing facility like Boeing. One, in regards to Brother Palmer, if he's not going to be hired, or if he is going to be hired, or if he's under consideration, there should be someone interim in place so that, again, the kids aren't suffering because they are going to be up against students, certainly with facilities that are much better than ours. And they are getting in shape, which if they're not now, they're going to be behind. Two, in regards to the young lady's, Dr. Howard's presentation, I heard that it's a state mandate document. With the different categories that you have for student activity or disruption, if you will, does that correlate to dates? And does that correlate to activities that may have happened that would give the kids the bad events that they're, that are being caused? And can you, is there usually graphics that are presented so that we know over time how these things are reacting compared year to year, month to month, or whatever? So, again, I'm used to a little bit more detail, sitting at a meeting, presenting things to, you know, executives, and I just hope that there, as we move forward, and Brother Adams, I hope that you would put these things in place, that we have a lot more detail to present to the community so that we know exactly what's going on. Bye.
Are there any additional comments? Do we have any phone calls or any emails?
Hello. I'm Sharice Lyles, I'm a parent, ladies on here also, and I have four children in the district. I just feel like there's a lot of mess going on in the district, and we're not taking into consideration of our children that's in the district. The lunches is horrible. I would like for people to just come and just see what our children is eating. We're running out of food, there's not enough food to feed certain grade levels as well. And I wouldn't even feed the food to my dog. So I feel like while we're trying to fix the mess that's going on here, our children is being overlooked. I would, I just want to make sure that everyone just remember that as we try to fix this mess that's going on. And that's all I have to say.
Are there any additional comments and/or questions at this time?
Sheila Brazil, 1200 Jefferson Street. I've been around, been coming to board meetings ever since Ms. James was on the board. I was on the board myself for a year, and I was on, coming to the board meetings when Adrian Sanders was on the board, when DeSanto, to Mr. Pivensky, and everybody was on the board. And people talking about politics and racial stuff. At the end of the day, everybody just need to remember, it's about the kids. It's not about if I like you, if I don't like you, because half the people, my grandma told me, you get more flies with honey than you do with vinegar. So if, just because if I don't agree with something you're doing, we can agree to disagree, but for some racism and the politics, my son just turned thirty last Friday, and he was, I've been coming in this district now for like twenty-five years, support meetings, and this has been going on for a long time. So I think, if you think somebody is trying to out to get you, it's a vindict, it's vendetta, you don't like this person or that person, just let it all go. This is twenty, from tonight, October the 28th, let's move forward. Tomorrow, start of October 29th, I think I got my dates right, let's just, cause start the move, get over it, let's move on. Just leave all the racial, politics, and all that stuff, because politics is here, as has been here, racial stuff is here, as it has always been here. So if you, I believe red, and you believe red, no matter what complexion of your skin is. So if people remember that, at the end of the day, we're just people, and if you believe in God, He's the Father, and we are related, because we are the children. So just let it go. I don't care if you don't like, I hear the union stuff, I hear emails from this, texts from that, about the union, about stuff that, some stuff that is going on with Dr. Adams, stuff that Dr. Mr. Repellet did. You even hear stuff with Dr. Lewis, when Dr. Lewis was superintendent. Let's let it all go, let's move on, because it's about the kids. My daughter's a senior this year, like my oldest, he's thirty years old, he graduated in 2010. This has been going on for years and years, it's time to move on. If you don't like me, that's fine, we can agree to disagree, but at the end of the day, God say we must love everyone, He say we didn't have to like each other, but if you have the good for the kids at heart, just let it all go. From this forward, whether you think you like Dr. Adams or don't like Dr. Adams, He's inherited a lot of stuff, just move on. At the end of the day, it's about the kids. It's about my personality, your personality, who, if I like you, you like me. Because I love all of y'all, but half of y'all, I don't like y'all, because God said I must, but I don't, you don't know that, because I don't perpetrate a fraud. Because if I have something to say, I'm gonna say it to your face. I can say it behind your back, but I still come to your face. So let's just move on. Everything tonight, let's kick it out the door. Tomorrow, let's move this district to a new level. Thank you.
Maureen Casey, 1670 West Princeton Avenue, retired employee of this wonderful district. Thank you for everything that you do, and thank you for everything that you just said. There is a lot that we have to let go, but there is so much more that we keep letting go that we are forgetting about the children. We let go of the wrong things. We let go of the things that the children need, like a good meal, like our special ed kids who are suffering tremendously by having our child study team cut, by having their services cut, by having transportation changes. We have to not let the important things go. Our color, our race, our politics, you can let all of that go. I have never cared about any of that. I've cared about the children. But when I sit at home in September and I'm crying because I'm not here, because it was time for me to go, but I left behind many, many amazing teachers and amazing children that need your help. They need your help. They need you to find the curriculum, the programs, the services that they need to be successful. It's not all, not every child is the same, you all know that. You all see that each child is different, and everybody requires something different. We can't have a program that only services certain children and makes certain people feel successful. Stop worrying about what, how behind a child is. Stop worrying about that. Make them feel successful for where they are. Who cares if they're a grade level behind? Work to get them up, if they're two grade levels behind, work to get them up, but don't make them feel unsuccessful by giving them programs that don't make them feel successful. You have the ability, you have teachers here that know how to work with special needs children. You have an amazing, I mean, you've deteriorated tremendously, the child study team and related services. Speech, OT, PT, you have a physical therapist who is running around giving the best service you've ever received here in years. Your speech therapist, teaching your children how to speak in complete sentences, clearly articulate, like you want them to be, like you want your own children to speak and learn. Occupational therapists, teaching your children how to walk, how to hold a pencil. You, our children need all those things, all of our children need that, all of them. But we just keep taking away and taking away and taking away. Stop taking away. You can let go, let go of the nonsense, let go of race and politics. I care about everyone, but don't let go of what the kids need, please.
Good evening, Perry Medina, Aberdeen, New Jersey, proud principal of Martin Luther King Upper Elementary School. You know, first of all, thank you so much for doing what you do. This is missionary work, often thankless, often very difficult. And thank you, Maureen, for that truly inspiring speech, because, you know, even though we do let things go, what remains is what is important. We have dynamite staff in this district, I have seen that firsthand. We have dynamite leadership in this district, I have seen that firsthand. I have seen that firsthand. I'm proud to be an employee of Asbury Park School District. I was born and raised in the section of Eastern York in Brooklyn, New York. Asbury Park feels like my home. I see myself in my kids. I see myself in some of my staff members. I was a product of teenage parents, who I'm very proud to say are very successful. And, you know, I'm a father of two, and my daughter actually inspired me today to come up here and deliver some remarks. Normally, I stay out the limelight. I like to do my business with my team, kind of behind the scenes or with the community. But I do want to address that there have been some communications and actions that seem designed to sow the seed of discontent, eliciting responses that lack substance, but facilitate an echo chamber where false narratives have germinated. I'm here on behalf of A Passa, but also all my staff, to say, we want to reaffirm our belief and commitment to the to the to the soundness and promise of the Asbury Park District's current leadership, work, and direction. Our members, the leaders of APSD, will not be distracted by emotional manipulative tactics or driven by political interests of a few. Instead, will be guided by our moral compass, our overarching focus on the development and blossoming of our staff and our students. We understand that discontent is being cultivated by a few with peripheral platforms, but is not reflective of the larger staff. As I mentioned before, we have dynamite staff and teachers that I will go through a wall for. The members of A Passa will remain resolute in our focus on fostering a healthy and productive work and learning environment where our staff and students can flourish. Our work will continue to be guided by the needs and interests of our educators, students, families, and community. We will continue to focus on communication, transparency, collaboration, and unity in our efforts to build a bright future for our students. We ask that the members of the board and the greater Asbury community join us in cutting through the noise and redirecting our energies towards the well-being and productivity of all in APSD. Thank you.
Are there any additional comments?
Ladina Als, Asbury Park, parent. I want to just say, I hear a lot of great things coming from teachers and administration, how much they love the city, how much they're doing for the children, and how much they love the kids. I want to know, how many of you live in the district? How many of you, your children, go to school here in the district? You saying you're doing such a wonderful job, and you're offering so much. Would you bring your kids here to learn? You know? Well, I'm asking everyone. Oh, okay, then. So for for me, it really boils down to, I feel like there's a lot of people making decisions on lives that you really don't have any sort of clue or care. I mean, I know some of you, I know a few of you personally, and I know that, you know, you have dedicated your lives to support the youth of Asbury Park and the school district. But there's a lot of you, I just really feel like it's a job. Okay? It's a district that, you know, it was an easy way to get into the door of teaching. It's it's just, I feel like if you really want change, you have to be a part of the change, not just sit here and tell us what our kids are doing, right and wrong. You have to be a part of the community. Most of the kids here, I mean, most parents, they don't know their kids' teachers' names, and that's the parent's fault. I agree with that. There's a lot of things that are both parent and teacher related in fault.
Directed towards us.
Yeah, but it's like, everyone has something to say, but no one's saying anything. You know, you have parents who complain every day, all day. You didn't show up to a meeting. You didn't come to the to the teacher, teacher, parent meeting. Okay? There's a lack of communication. I have a I have a 10-year-old who has experienced numerous issues in Barack. When we had our meeting, and I called everyone to the table, there was not one piece of documentation. Not one. That was from the previous principal, guidance counselor, teachers. She was assaulted, jumped, in the third grade in a bathroom. Where was the where was the gym teacher? Why was that not documented? Everyone is at fault. Who's to say who's really qualified to be here? We have to take a chance on each other. But please don't tell me how much you care if you're not even willing to sit down or even be a part of the community on a day-to-day basis. You do your eight hours, you go home, and that's it.
My name is Ina Sumlin, and I live at 1101 Bangs Avenue. Most of you guys have known me for years for being in the community, let alone doing a lot of projects in the community, let alone for our kids and our seniors. I listened to a lot of people tonight complain about a lot of things. But as a parent that has no longer have children left in his district, I'm about to call all our parents out. A lot of our committee members who are sitting here, our teachers that are sitting here, I'm going to challenge every last one of them tonight. By next week, reach out to at least one parent that you know that has the children in this district to call me, and we can work out something. Because my thing is, a lot of people want to come to the board meetings and complain and fuss and argue and do whatever. But if it doesn't take our parents to step up and make a change, there won't be no change in this community. It's going to continue to do to be the way it's been for years. But I'm going to challenge everybody that's at this board meeting tonight, staff, community members, parents, whoever, reach out to one parent in this district, have them reach out to West Side Citizens United, and we can move forward. Thank you.
My name is Regina Jagu, 809 Dunleavy Street, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I have two grown women that attended Asbury Park, and they're very successful in their jobs. And now, what I'm seeing, I do not like. I've been here 38 years. I see superintendents come, superintendents go, board come, board go. But lately, I am very disappointed in you, and that's it.
I was going to sit down and shut up. Felicia Felicia Simmons, Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey, high school graduate of Asbury Park, a former board member, parent of Asbury Park student, only educated through Asbury Park from kindergarten, from preschool to senior year. Now off in State University, Bowling Green, Ohio, in Bowling Green, Ohio, Bowling Green. I'm proud of him, District 19. My issue, I've talked about plenty of my issues, and everybody here has talked about the issue. But again, I'm falling back to how people have taken it personal, and instead of thinking about the children. We talk about this pandemic that hit us. But for years before, we talked about being technically responsible. But people want to be spiteful and go after people things. We talked about every child having a laptop or iPad. I've specifically bought Green Energy, University Energy, Shawnee Energy Company, talking about the way the school district can go forward with green energy, energy, teaching it, educating it. Dr. Rapolet, at the time, was on the board of Keene University, which is the only certification of green, green energy in the state, and having a partnership with Asbury Park School. Right now, we're sitting here with no students, right? Our students getting beat up on. We talked about in the city, making the whole city a Wi-Fi hotspot, so they won't have to go home and worry about not having the things that they need to be successful. Right? Your job is to make sure that the school and the students are successful. It's not about you not liking me. It's not about you not liking whoever else. It is not a tit-for-tat, a spiteful thing. It's about our students, it's about our community, right? It's about the teachers, and it's about the people from here, because as a person from here, I come to the table, you, you, you know, you don't listen to me. I'm listened to everywhere else in the state. But when I come to you, because I think about my home, and my kids, and the people that I know, and the people I grew up with, you're not listening, because we're not valued, right? We have an agenda. Yes, our agenda is to make sure that our community is better, is to make sure that our kids are educated, is to make sure that they're in healthy schools, is to make sure that they have good food, which we spoke about the same incidents nearly 10 years ago. And there's people who's been sitting on this board for close to 20. We have to do better. And it's not about people who are just coming here. I'm not picking fights, right? I want to sit here and do better. I don't want to give up, because we're on the last leg. And if all these issues that you constantly hear from people, people have come to this pulpit many a times, right, this diet, right? Many a times, and say, there's an issue. Listen to us who are from here, right? Because we kind of know, we go home with it. So when you hear parents and people come to you saying that we need education, we need a real curriculum, we need people to stop using this as a piggy bank, and we need you to think about the kids. And that's what we've been seeing. And it might seem like we're attacking some people. But what we're saying is, it happened to me, it happened to my child, so it's now supposed to happen to my grandchild? We have to continue on and make a real plan and do real things to make sure that our kids benefit. And we have to stop the spiteful tit-for-tat, piggy bank politics that are happening here in this district. So thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, so we'll be moving on, but before we move on, I just have to say that I do appreciate, we do appreciate as a board, the community coming out. We do appreciate the teachers coming up and speaking, and we are listening. Although we're quiet and we cannot say much in return, we are listening. We do hear you. Thank you. State Mind Kids Report. Ms. Hastings, can we have an acceptance of the meeting minutes, please?
Yes, thank you. Could I have a motion for A1, 11A through H?
I'll move it. Second.
Any questions or comments?
Any questions or comments?
Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Yes, D isn't David? Thank you. Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Grillow?
Yes.
Mr. Lotaraka?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
And Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Madam President, before we start the superintendent's agenda, can we separate B6 number one and handle that separately?
Yes, we're gonna, we're asking to separate B6 number one out of the consent agenda. Adams, when you, okay.
I ask for a consent agenda from B1 through B6, with the exception of 1B6, include B2 and B3, excuse me, number 2 and number 3, excluding 1.
I'll move it.
Second. Any questions or comments? Ms. Hastings?
This is all items B1 through B6, excluding B6 number 1. Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Grillow?
Yes.
Mr. Lotaraka?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
All items carry.
And Mr. Hastings, can we go back to B6, item 1?
Yes, we need a motion. And there's a correction on the fifth paragraph, should say June 30th, not June 20th.
Madam Vice President?
May I, I want to say something first, and then I'll have Ms. Abes Anderson read the resolution for the public. The Asbury Park Board of Education has been engaged in the search for the Asbury Park School District's next school chief administrator for the last few months. We hired New Jersey school boards to assist the board, and we thanked Kathy Weincoff for expertly executing the search process. Seven board members, Mr. Lotaraka, Mr. Grillow, Ms. Cook, Ms. Abes Anderson, Mr. Remy, and Mr. Saunders, and I reviewed survey results from the community and staff, 19 applications, and selected three exceptionally qualified candidates to interview. A second interview was conducted with two finalists. The board executed their responsibilities with only one thing in mind, our students. We had honest and candid conversations about who would be our next chief school administrator. I would like to read a quote at this time from Theodore Roosevelt. "It's not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends his time in worthy cause, who at best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place will never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." Ms. Abes Anderson, would you read that resolution, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas a vacancy exists for the position of superintendent of schools of the Asbury Park School District, and whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education engaged the New Jersey School Boards Association to conduct a search for superintendent of schools, and whereas at the conclusion of the superintendent's search process, the Asbury Park Board of Education selected Dr. Rashawn M. Adams to serve as superintendent of schools, and whereas on or about October 27, 2021, Dr. Lester Richens, executive county superintendent for Monmouth County, reviewed and approved the superintendent of schools employment contract between Dr. Rashawn M. Adams and the Asbury Park Board of Education, effective October 28, 2021 through June 30, 2026. In accordance with state law and administrative code, and further authorize the Asbury Park Board of Education to take action on the superintendent of schools employment contract at its next public board of education meeting. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education appoints Dr. Rashawn M. Adams as its superintendent of schools, effective October 28, 2021 through June 30, 2026, in accordance with the terms and conditions of the employment contract that was approved by Dr. Lester Richens, executive county superintendent for Monmouth County on October 27, 2021. And be it further resolved that the board vice president, board secretary, and board attorney be and are hereby authorized to take any and all actions that are necessary in order to effectuate this action of the board.
Move it.
I second.
Dr. Lester Richens, executive county superintendent for Monmouth County, reviewed and approved the superintendent of schools employment contract between Dr. Rashawn M. Adams and the Asbury Park Board of Education, effective October 28th, 2021, through June 30th, 2026. In accordance with state law and administrative code, and further authorized the Asbury Park Board of Education to take action on the superintendent of schools employment contract at its next public board of education meeting. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education appoints Dr. Rashawn M. Adams as its superintendent of schools, effective October 28th, 2021, through June 30th, 2020... June 26th. Excuse me. June 30th, 2026, in accordance with the terms and conditions of the employment contract that was approved by Dr. Lester Richens, executive county superintendent for Monmouth County on October 27th, 2021. And be it further resolved that the board vice president, board secretary, and board attorney be and are hereby authorized to take any and all actions that are necessary in order to effectuate this action of the board. Move it. I second.
Questions or comments, discussion? Roll call, Mr. Hastings?
Mr. Grillow?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lotaraka?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Upstair.
Motion carries.
Point of privilege, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank, um, the board and all of its members. Secondly, I would like to recognize the professional accomplishment of our new principal of the Third Good Marshall Elementary School, Dr. Lauren Jackson. This is a professional accomplishment for not only herself, for her family, and today, um, to her mom who is here, her fiance. I would like to say, um, you have witnessed the hard work and dedication of your hard work mom, being a single mom who raised her. She shared those stories with me and you should take a bow at your daughter's accomplishments today. Secondly, I would like to officially welcome Ms. Muriel M. Lau, Bonnie, our new director of special services. This is her first board meeting. Um, and she is going to do, uh, the extraordinary work, the difficult task. And she will work with urgency to provide the services for our most challenging of students. And so, welcome, Mrs. Lau. This is, um, for me, my family has dedicated, uh, you have some folks who have family traditions of attorneys. You have some family traditions of physicians. Today, being appointed the superintendent, I have, uh, accomplished a, uh, role that my family has, uh, played a role in over 75 years. Presently, my grandmother was a school security guard. My mother is presently a school custodian in this Baltimore City School District. Countless family members are teachers in the Jersey City Public School System, Baltimore Union from PE and the like. So today, I accept this position with the reverence and the obligation that my family has dedicated to this profession and the craft of teaching. Teaching is a calling. Teaching is a way of living. It is not for the meek. It is not for the timid. And there's a quote in the poem, "If, if you can keep your head when all about you are losing theirs and blaming it on you; if you can trust yourself when all men doubt you but make allowances for their doubting too, understand, this is not a seat for the timid." I understand the work that it requires and I do it with humility. I do it for the students and I do it because I have a legacy of people who have held the banter for me to walk through and have blazed a trail for me. So I have many bridge builders who have built the bridge to span the tide for myself. And so, to all of the brothers of Omega Psi Phi that are in the audience today, I thank you for your friendship. You have truly demonstrated friendship is essential to the soul. Thank you, madam.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move it.
Call the favor.
Aye.
Leading close.